With Carla for the last five years. I know how much work it takes to be a school committee member and I know how much of your time that you've invested into making sure that we looked at things in a new perspective and turned a light and really just took it out of the box that we were in and flipped it on its head and looked at it differently. And I appreciated working with you on the subcommittees because of the way you thought about things. So, thank you for your dedication to the school district. And any other member here who has worked with Carla that would like to say anything, I'm gonna open it up to the floor. Is there anyone?
I would definitely like to jump in. I would like to thank Carla for her time. I worked with Carla only for the last two years. That's all I've been here so far. But it was a tremendous pleasure working with her both on the school committee and in the subcommittees, the Public Relations Subcommittee and the Academic Excellence Subcommittee. And one of the things that I appreciated most about working with Carla is she always wanted to focus on the students. And it was never the students as numbers, right? When we were at Academic Excellence, we would say, "Look, here's our N double E A scores and here's our MCAST scores." Carla would push back and say, "That's really not what I want to hear about. I want to hear about the engaging things that the kids are doing in the classroom. I want to know how they're learning. I want to know that they're getting great experiences and that they're interacting with one another." And I just treasure that insight from Carla because that's what this work is about. It's about the kids in the classes learning. And I want to thank you for all of the time that you dedicated for those 20-plus years to the students of Athol and Royalston and to this district, Carla. So, thank you.
I want to respond to Matt. Because Matt, you just summed up everything that I have found rewarding and positive in my time as a school committee. The sense of working as a team, the sense of focusing on what's really happening in the classroom, on engagement, creativity. And really, in the last couple of years, I feel like we're getting where we need to be. It has been a really long time. Different superintendents have tried in different ways, not always with success. And here we are. Here we are talking about engagement, collaboration, autonomy, creativity, both for teachers and for students. And it is an absolute delight, even though I'm, you know, I'm not here to enjoy it, to know that that's starting to happen, going on in this system.
Thank you, Carla.
So, thank you. Thanks to everybody who has been involved in making that happen.
Calum, I want to thank you very much for your services for the students and to the district. Thank you for your services again. Thanks.
Oh, yes, Lee. Yes, please.
I just wanted to say thank you, Carla. Carla, and just, people need to know that Carla Robinowitz has always been something that I've admired, that I could never be, and that's a voice of reason. My voice of reason was always dictated.
I try, I try.
My voice of reason's always dictated by my boot close level. So, Carla, you've been a steadfast supporter of this district for many, many years. And in between time off and retirements, you know, we've worked together for a very long time, and I just want to say thank you.
Congratulations, Carla.
Thanks, Matt.
And nice for you.
Thank you.
We brought the principals to speak today.
So, next on my list, but not certainly in any particular order, this evening, we have a teacher of 34 years at Aces, Myra Calvi. There is a principal here. Come on up.
So, is this right here? Is that right?
Sure.
It is my pleasure to recognize Myra Calvi Majuleski for 34 years of service to the students and families of Athol, Royalston Regional School District. Myra's not only a lifer in terms of her teaching career, but she was also a student in this district, having attended Sanders Street School, Athol Junior High School, and Athol High School. She returned to her roots, teaching at Sanders Street School and ending her career at Aces. I have a unique relationship with Myra. We have truly come full circle. She served as my mentor. I practice this.
I know.
Not well.
When I was a novice kindergarten teacher, who was hired two days before the start of school, and I replaced a teacher who left 35 years' worth of stuff in my classroom. Myra became my friend and colleague, and I always looked to her for guidance on student engagement and making learning joyful and fun. I was also blessed to have her teach two of my four children, and I was able to see the magic of her classroom from a parent's eyes. The circle was complete. When I joined Aces and got to work with her as a principal. In each role, Myra has exhibited a commitment to her students and this community. She was an advocate, sometimes relentlessly, but her students were always her focal point. So, on behalf of all that you have served in the past 34 years, thank you and a well-deserved retirement.
She has a mic.
I practiced that, too. It's just been a blessing working in the Athol, Royalston Regional School District. I couldn't have asked for a better career. Who gets to do this for 34 years and love every day of it? Maybe not the last three years, but it was great. And Kylie, I got to have her in my classroom two years, looped with her. She's a phenomenal person, and I can't be more proud of you to be on this committee. So, thank you very much. I've been blessed and great and very thankful.
We do have two names from Aces this evening, but we'd like to recognize them. Also from Aces, Holly Seto, she's a teacher for 18 years. And Donna McCarthy, who is a speech pathologist for the last 10 years. We thank you so much for your service. We do have a plaque for you, so if you get to watch this video, please.
I have a statement.
You have a statement.
I do.
Perfect. Yes, so, yeah, so if you want to come right up to the microphone. Perfect.
I'll try. I didn't have to write these, so we'll probably do better. Donna McCarthy started her career in 2013, working between the Sanders Street and Riverbend Schools. She had previously worked in private school setting as well as a skilled nursing facility. With that breadth of knowledge, she has given the children of this district exceptional speech and language services. Her calm and gentle style has endeared her to her students, her friends and faculty and families over the years. We wish Ms. McCarthy a fulfilling retirement, one that she truly deserves.
Now, we have one more.
For the past 30 years, Holly Seto has called the Athol, Royalston Regional School District her home. During that time, she has provided outstanding service to the district and her students. Holly has fulfilled many roles in our district, including paraprofessional, kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher, second grade teacher, and most recently, reading interventionist. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, she has served as a mentor, advocate, and support for both students and other staff members. Holly has worked tirelessly to ensure that the needs of her students are met. She is always willing to work hard, learn, and take on new responsibilities. Holly joined the Title I Reading Intervention Team a few years back. From her first day, she jumped in, got right to work, quickly learning the testing, the intervention materials that we utilize. She used many of her talents as a classroom teacher to help the students in their intervention groups grow. It is evident that Holly has made a lasting impact on her students as they continue to seek her out in the hallway or when her former students attend their own children's events at Aces. She devoted her entire teaching career to the Athol community. Her dedication to the students and staff of this district is unmatched. She will be missed at Aces, and we wish her all the best.
So, next for our retiree this evening, we have Linda Robinson, a teacher for 30 years. Is Linda with us this evening?
I've been teasing Linda since the beginning of the year, and I'm like, "Don't stay extra time." Ms. Robinson has worked in the Athol Regional, Athol Royalston Regional School District for 30 years. Linda started in 1993, teaching fifth grade at the Riverbend School. The next year, she worked at Pleasant Street School, teaching grade six for three years. Linda then switched to fourth grade, which she taught for 20 years. Then she moved to Aces to teach third grade ELA for one year, and she came to RCS and taught third and fourth grade for four years before finally switching to a self-contained third grade classroom for the last two years. The most challenging part of her educational career, according to her, was teaching during COVID. She said that she had limited computer skills and had to learn a lot to teach remotely. Now she enjoys seeing students that she had in the past out in the community. Some are now police officers and business owners in Royalston. Linda has enjoyed seeing her former students, now as parents, come to RCS with their own children. Her reflection on the last 30 years is that her career has been rewarding. Linda's professional leadership has shined through this year with her work in our building instructional leadership team and her students' growth and their achievements. As an educator, Linda has made many positive relationships with families, friends, and colleagues. She will be missed. We will miss, we wish her all the best for her retirement and hope that we see her again on campus. So, Linda, subbing anything? I'll call you. Okay. Yes, please. Congratulations.
Next with RCS, we have a paraprofessional for eight years, Jean Sonnabend. Next with RCS, we have a paraprofessional for eight years, Jean Sonnabend.
Jean's in Florida. She's in Florida. Her son, James, was gonna come join us. But Ms. Sonnabend has dedicated many years of her life to students. She began her work in education over 40 years ago. She has been a substitute, a long-term substitute, and administrative assistant. Jean has also worked in the fields of real estate and banking. For the past nine years, she's been a part of our school district. She joined the district in 2015 as lunchroom support at Royalston Community School. Then she became a paraprofessional at RCS and then later, a paraprofessional at Aces. She returned to RCS as a paraprofessional and retired last year. Ms. Sonnabend continues to be a valuable member of the RCS family, serving as a substitute for paraprofessionals and teachers. I am thankful for her kind heart and her continued dedication to RCS. She is, she's currently enjoying her retirement and spending time with her friends and her family and enjoying time with her five grandsons, who keep her very busy.
From ARMS, we have Kathy Steve, Ms. Steve, a teacher for 32 years.
So, I battled with this microphone last night at our celebration, so bear with me. I know that Ms. Steve was not able to make it tonight. She kind of tried to retire once and was unsuccessful because she came back to help us at the middle school for the first half of the year. And I just wanted to say that she was very selfless in her time. She was very helpful with our new teachers, was always a resource for them, as she was helping with our eighth grade as a special educator. And then even after she had completed the first half of the year helping us, she was able to volunteer her time to help out in a lot of different ways. So, we will miss her, and we're very thankful for her efforts this year, so just wanted to mention that. So, thank you.
I don't think Dan is here. Dan Hill this evening? Is he here this evening? I don't see him.
Unless he's hiding, I don't see him.
Mr. Dan Hill, he's been a teacher and an assistant principal for the last five years.
Yes, and so, Mr. Hill, actually, we were able to surprise him last night at our eighth grade step-up celebration and recognize his efforts. But he, too, was integral this year, until he wasn't able to finish the year off, just some matters he was dealing with. But he was also another person who was very selfless with his time, dedicated to the students. A lot of comments about the different kinds of hats that he would wear, a very creative soul, but was dedicated to the kids. And in my first year, I just, I need to say that he was very helpful, helping me kind of learn the ropes and get to know the different people and resources and things about our middle school. So, he was very helpful. He'll be missed, and so, wanted to congratulate him, so. Thank you.
TJ, are you over there? I didn't know if anybody prepared anything for Victor Melanson, groundskeeper for 10 years. Did you want to say anything?
Victor Melanson started with our district in 2013 as a custodian at ARMS. He would move on to the high school, and in 2019, he settled in in grounds where I had the opportunity to work with him for the last three or four months of his retirement and speaking with numerous people in regards to how Victor was on grounds. He was very particular and took pride in all of his work. And I see it, saw it in the three or four months I had to work with him, and I see it on how he passed it on to our current grounds. He was unable to make it tonight because he is off traveling. But he was in last week, in good spirits, comes in periodically to say hi, and is doing very well. So, thank you.
That wraps up that part of this evening. We're gonna be moving on to unfinished business, but I wanted to give anybody an opportunity to step out if you'd like to, although it's enthralling, and I know you want to stay. Please feel free to leave at this time. The unfinished business that we have is school choice district availability. I believe the numbers per grade were in your packet. Oh, thank you. Yep, got it. So, the last meeting, we approved the minutes, we approved the opening of school choice, and there were questions came up with what seats are going to be available. Matt, do you have words you wanted to speak to this about?
We did read them at the last meeting. However, we were not certain that those were going to be the final numbers, and consulting with all of our principals. But at this point, we are prepared to announce what seats are available at which grade level. And I'll start with Athol High School. In the ninth grade, there will be 15 seats available for school choice. In the 10th grade, there will be seven seats. In the 11th grade, there are 12 seats. And in the 12th grade, there are five seats. At Athol Middle School, Athol Royalston Middle School, there's a typo on the paper, I apologize. There's, the fifth grade has 10 seats. The sixth grade has two seats available. The seventh grade has three seats available, and there are no seats available in the eighth grade. At Royalston Community School, there are three seats available in the first grade. There are no seats available in second or third grade. There are six seats available in the fourth grade, four seats available in the fifth grade, and 10 seats available in the sixth grade. And at Athol Community Elementary School, there are no available slots at any of the grades. Those are the numbers that we have for the upcoming school year school choice.
Correct me if I do, do we have to vote on that? Do we have to vote on those numbers? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the school choice opening seats as presented by Matt. Motion? Second. Motion made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. Moving along to new business, first on the agenda this evening is the Washington DC trip with Ms. DeBarrows. And is Megan here for you two? Megan, you want to come up?
So, I would like to take this time to thank our superintendent, Matt Aaronworth, Athol High School Principal, Mr. Dave King, Mr. Dan Dede, and our entire school committee. On behalf of myself and the sophomore class, I would like to thank you for the generous opportunity that was given. Payment in full for an educational field trip is unheard of. This trip is important to our students on so many levels. Having an opportunity to explore outside of your own community may never happen for some of our kids. Experiencing history firsthand, stepping outside of a textbook in an experience in itself, and lastly, alleviating the financial burden, not having to decide between paying the rent and food costs or saving for your child to attend a trip of a lifetime. Words cannot express the gratitude that those families felt when they signed the permission slips for their children to attend. Again, thank you. I do have a slide, some slides of the trip, and we're also passing around some pictures that were taken. This was in the Harbor District. One of our students. That's one of our students' piece. Whoops.
You got it?
Thank you.
I was jumping.
These were some statues outside of the Harbor District that some of our kids took pictures and photos with. One of our students in the harbor, there's a little beach area that has a volleyball net set up. They do movies. There's also the Capitol Whale, which the students got on. It's a big Ferris wheel that overlooks the harbor. They have some statues outside that the kids can try to climb on and get some physical experience, jumping up and down them. This is not moving. Sorry. This is one of our teachers who went on the field trip. That's Ms. Fischel. He teaches science. One of our other students, this was a great defeat for him to climb up. He was trying to do what everyone else did and managed after several attempts, but he did it. This, I'm sorry, this is sticky. This was inside, this was inside the Capitol. Inside the Capitol. We got the opportunity this year to visit the Capitol and the Supreme Court. I'm sorry, this is not.
We can hit the button for you if that's helpful.
That's where I thought I was jumping.
This was inside the Natural History Museum. There was a butterfly, a little butterfly area that you could step into, and the butterflies would come up, and you would be able to experience having the butterflies fly around you. This was a group photo that was taken outside of the Supreme Court. This was inside the Supreme Court. Also, the Supreme Court. Also, the Supreme Court. Also, the Supreme Court. One of our teachers taking, it was very hot, and we had to walk the Capitol area to get from point A to point B, where the buses drive us. It's all uphill, and it takes quite a bit. We, that's the Capitol. The next photo, I believe, was one of the monuments of Martin Luther King. We visited all of the monuments. I think I left the itinerary on the table as to what we, the entire week that we were there. This is Lincoln Memorial, that is the World War II Memorial, the Capitol again. This was inside the Holocaust Museum. One of our students who was reading and also paying tribute to the Holocaust Eternal Light. That was also, these were all, this was a room inside the Holocaust Museum, showing all of the families. The museum is about four stories, four, five stories tall, and this went from the bottom floor to the top, and it showed all of the family members. This is the Vietnam Memorial. This is the, this was the Korean War Memorial. This was outside of the World War II, no, sorry. Yeah, E. O. Chima Memorial, sorry. Also, they were doing, every year that we've gone so far, they've been doing drills and practicing for a big performance that they put on for the Memorial Day weekend, so we've got to experience that for the past few years. And this is the secretary, the administrative secretary, who also came along and without her help of doing some last-minute paperwork. She's gonna kill me if she sees this photo, so. I'm apologizing in advance. So, I also, Megan is also here to speak on behalf of the trip.
So, I'm Megan Chauncey. I teach math at the high school. I've had the opportunity to chaperone the 10th grade trip the last two years. It's a great experience for our students, one that many of them would probably not get to experience if it wasn't for the district and school committee approving and paying for the trip the last couple of years. During the trip, our students were exposed to many new experiences and are able to learn valuable lessons about our country's history. This year, one of my highlights was getting to visit the Capitol Building. I, as well as the students, learned a lot about the Capitol Building on that tour that I didn't know before, like the Hall of Statues, that was originally built to house all 100 statues, which is two per state. But they quickly learned that that many statues would be too heavy, and it started caving in. So, they have to display them elsewhere in the Capitol. Another highlight for many were the monuments that we visited. The monuments are not only works of art, they were, the kids loved to see them, but they also got to learn their significance to our history. Speaking from experience, as I grew up going through the Athol schools, and I actually participated in the DC trip when I was in eighth grade, these students will remember this trip for the rest of their lives. I want to sincerely thank you all for allowing us to take our students on this once-in-a-lifetime trip.
Now, I'm gonna be completely honest. I didn't write anything. I don't like these two, so it's straight from the heart, guys. I just want to say, the DC trip was truly something to experience. Now, I loved every bit of it. There was not one part that I hated. Even though it was sometimes so sunny, and I wore the wrong clothes while we were walking, I wanted to thank all of you from the bottom of my hearts, I mean, from the bottom of my heart, sorry. And I wanted to especially thank all the chaperones, because I know, the ride on those buses, those kids were getting on your nerves. But I most, I really loved all the museums we went to, like the Holocaust Museum. I learned a lot. And all, and I especially loved the ending when we went on the carnival. And I also loved the multiple times I had to call my parents, because, you know, I was hungry and I wanted to spend some money. But thank you, guys, so much for making this possible, all right? And even though a lot of the students aren't here, I could all tell, they would say the same thing, because this was always an experience that I would remember, the times where I wouldn't be able to wake up to get ready for the dorms. Or I could definitely tell when I was packing, I didn't want to leave. I don't go out often, you know, out of my own home, so this was just an amazing experience. And I know it costed so much money, but thank you, guys, so much.
And if I could just add, I did not make Mr. Dede's, planning of his finances very easy, so I came with a party gift. And if I could just add, I did not make Mr. Dede's, planning of his finances very easy, so I came with a party gift.
Anne, before you walk away, I just wanted to say thank you. We went on this trip together three years ago and I think it was your first year maybe doing it three years ago? You do a spectacular job and I, you put so much thought and emphasis on what gives those children the best experience. And I, my kid still talks about it, she went, she went again and paid to go a second time. So thank you for all the hard work, all of the chaperones put in to make the trip memorable. I know how much it means to them, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
So, if I may, Anne gave me a couple of T-shirts for the staff in the business office, because let's face it, they're the backbones of all that I do and I'll be the first to admit to it. So I just wanted to say publicly, if I may, that these three T-shirts are for them, to thank them for all that they did to make this possible. So, thank you ladies.
Moving on to our next item of business, it's our Business Manager Contract Introduction. I am going to butcher your last name, I do apologize, but Nancy, come on up. Maybe you can pronounce it for me and then I can learn.
So we're going to go with Nancy Koninski. We're going to just skip the middle of it because I think it'll be a lot easier, so I'll go by Nancy Koninski.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you everybody for having me, I'm very excited to start my career here at the Athol Royalston School District. I come to you with 12 years' experience from a couple of different districts and I'm excited to get started here. I was fortunate today to spend the day here and I quickly learned that the leadership team here, who I met with, they were so friendly and welcoming and it really was a great feeling to know that I'll be joining them. I also was very fortunate to sit with Mr. Dede today, who has a wealth of knowledge and was very willing to make sure to share it with me before I start on July 1st. And I could quickly learn from speaking to his colleagues how appreciated he is. So I can feel that I have big shoes to fill in the short time he's been here. So thank you and I look forward to starting July 1st.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is kiln removal at AHS. The high school has purchased a new kiln for the art room and is requesting permission to remove it. The recommendation is to list it for sale for approximately $500 as it requires outdated manual kiln sitter technology. Looking for a motion to remove the kiln and place it for sale. Motion made, second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion about the kiln? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Technology RFP, are you okay to go? Next order of business is our Technology RFP, can you move that over to Matt?
Sure, so I am bringing to the committee today a template of an RFP. This may very well not be the specific RFP that we use. More than likely, more than likely will be. However, there may be a couple of additional documents that we need to include to make sure that we cover some legal bases. However, I'm coming to the committee this evening to explain why this RFP is here. Currently, we are going to be searching for a Technology Director for the FY '25 school year. And I am hosting the position so that we will get candidates that are applying for the Technology Director position. However, in the experience of my two years here, we've had a very limited applicant pool when it comes to qualified Technology Directors. And with that, I'm looking to put out this RFP as well to see if we can procure services from a company that would be able to come in and essentially perform all of the duties of a district Technology Director. However, it would be a contracted service. To be clear, any company that applies for this and is looking to complete this request for proposals, they will have to have an individual on site for a minimum of four days a week and more than likely up to five days a week. So I want to be clear that by contracting these services out, it is not going to leave a void in there being a person on the ground here in the district. As many of you know, there are a lot of opportunities for Technology Directors to do a bulk of their work remotely anyway, since it's all computer, a lot of it is computer based. However, I want to make sure that our technology assistants are supported on the ground and I want to make sure that we have ease of access for whoever the point person is, that someone is in our offices and in our buildings on a daily basis. So I just want to make that clear. But at the same time, I am asking for the committee to just take a quick glance at this request for proposals and I'm looking for approval to send out an RFP to entertain hiring either an individual or contracting with a company as we move forward with this process.
I'll move it.
We have a motion made to accept the RFP as presented by Matt this evening, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you very, thank you very much.
The next on our new business list is student handbooks, which you should have all received in your packets. Do we need to authorize, do we have to approve them?
Yes, so the student handbooks do need to be approved by the school committee. I have each of our principals here to discuss any changes or anything of significance within their handbooks. I do want to say, I'll bring up our ACES principal, Ms. Cleveland first. While she's coming up, or both of our elementary school principals, I'm not sure if they wanted to, it is essentially the same portion of the handbook. So if they wanted to highlight any of the changes, that would be great. While they're doing that, I am going to come around, we, there was a clerical issue that we put the wrong version of the middle school handbook in these packages around the table. So I'm going to go and hand these out while they are speaking to the elementary school package.
I don't think we had any significant changes. New principal at ACES on the cover. But we did add our, it's not a change in our practice, but we just really laid it out in the discipline section about what that restorative piece looks like. I think sometimes we talk to parents about tier one and tier two and we gave some clear feedback about what that is. But I really think that's the only significant change. And it's not a change of what, we just gave, we added the chart, that was an example.
If anyone has questions, happy to answer those with that clarity.
Yes.
I hear, when I was on the school community a little bit, I always had a pair of those that said to me, it'd be nice if they had the school committee names in here in number of cases, whether you wanted to contact them or anything. And let them know. So I don't know, so I just wanted to bring them up.
Yeah, I mean, that would be something that you could talk, I don't know that it would be our decision about that.
I didn't hear what she said.
She said that she wondered if school committee contact should be on there.
They're listed on the website for people to find. This is building specific for our student handbook, so the, what we do, we would be above like the business office. So if somebody needed to contact a school committee member, I think they would go to our website. But I don't think it'd be appropriate to be in the student handbook unless someone else felt differently.
Yeah, no, I just had parents when I was on, wanted them to be on, you know, that's always the end. I think that was a good idea.
I think now, with everything is digital, we don't give a printed copy anymore. So we give a digital copy and so I think if they're going to look there, they probably will look on the school committee later. Because we don't typically give a printed copy unless requested, so it probably will work that way.
I don't have any questions, I did review, there wasn't many changes.
No, we really didn't have changes other than adding the chart to just give a little more clarity to parents about.
So do we accept these individually or do we accept them as a bunch?
I would normally do them individually.
So since.
The ACES, I just have one, yeah, I just have one page after it.
We just have one page and then the page and then it goes right to middle school Athol handbook.
Okay, there is a huge, there is a huge, here, you can have mine, because I, and there, I think, I believe they were in the packet.
They're together.
Elementary one.
There's a thicker one and then the RCS one. ACES and RCS is almost exactly other, other than when you go to the arrival and dismissal, we state, there's no difference in time, but just where students get dropped off.
Okay, yeah, I did get a complete set in mind, so maybe we ran out of paper at some point, I'm not quite sure. But they were in the email packet.
Okay.
I'd like to move approval.
Perfect, thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve Athol Elementary Community School and RCS. Do we have any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
The dates on handbook are wrong?
I can't see.
The elementary one.
The elementary ones still say 23, 24. I don't know if that's relevant.
Yeah, we will definitely update the dates on them. And also, there are a couple of these, I believe now, in the package that may already have outdated personnel. So the dates.
We did try to update the personnel, as much as we could.
Not specifically the elementary school, I'm actually referencing a different school. So they were as up to date as possible when they came in. Some of the positions for the administration were actually even filled, so that we didn't know what the replacements' names would be. But the dates and any contact information for the administration or administrative assistants in the building, we will make sure that those are amended prior to dissemination and posting on the website.
Lee, would you like to change your motion to move them with the changes of the dates of the administration? Perfect, and would you still like to second that?
Accept it.
Okay, so the motion is made to accept as presented with the changes of dates and personnel as they come in. Is there any further discussion for these two schools? Not seeing any, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
So we'll go to the middle school next.
That's the version that was just handed out.
We'll have Mr. Webster go over any major changes in the book that you'd like to reference.
Certainly. Get this back up here. Our essential focus was to look at things like student behaviors and such to make them in a more kind of family and student friendly language, so it's more understandable. That was our main intent and I'm happy to answer any questions as far as questions that the council might have, committee might have.
I also, I asked Dr. Kennedy to speak to another change that we did make in the middle school that's particular to the academics and the students that may or may not pass certain subject areas.
So it's on page 14 and it's highlighted, although this copy that I just handed you is black and white, but it's highlighted, it's the first full paragraph on page 14. Unfortunately, the pagination needs to be repaired on this as well. However, we just changed the summer school policy. There was previously a summer school policy that said that families had to pay or they had to do volunteer work and so we made it a little bit more family friendly and just made it so that it allowed for building administrators and teachers to have the say in what students need to go to summer school in conjunction with, in tandem with families.
Just a question, there's no set fee schedule.
We have not, in my time here running the Title I Summer School, we have never charged families and so I didn't want to wholesale change the policy or, you know, I wasn't quite sure what this was based on, but we have not charged families, but.
So in the past, we've never charged a family?
In my five years here, no, not to my knowledge.
Long time ago.
Yeah, I remember something from a long time ago, but this is just basically saying that a parent, there may be a cost, but typically we haven't.
If in future years, there was a very stringent lean budget and we had to pay for summer school or we had, you know, I think it makes sense to leave it in there, but as of this year, we're not charging any families for summer school.
Okay. Thank you, there's a motion made to move as presented, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thanks, Mr. Webster.
Thank you.
Next we'll have Principal King, come on up.
Do you just have the version that has the blue in it? So all the changes should be in blue?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So basically, the blue aligns with all of our systems and structures that are happening within our school now. Biggest one is we now use a Smart Pass system, so we've updated that information. Tried to identify what chronic tardiness meant, it wasn't explicitly laid out before. So you'll see Smart Pass updated multiple times throughout this document. Our biggest change made is the use of social probation, academic probation. We've had with restorative solutions needing to be utilized, we're looking to lean back on the notion of social probation in our school for students that don't meet academic and social responsibilities. Ultimately, our athletes, if they don't hit a certain amount of academic success, meaning they do not pass more than, so if they fail more than one class, they're not eligible for athletics. We're looking to set that same standard for every single student in our school. What that means is we're setting a high expectation for students. Our students are expected to show up in our school, participate in the educational process, participate throughout the building in order to reward themselves with the social things that happen in our school, whether that's a dance, whether that's coming to athletic events to support our school. But we want to hold them to the same standard as everyone else in our school. So you'll see social probation used there and ultimately what we're trying to do, if a student says, no, I'm not going to follow the cell phone policy here, we really can't suspend them. But what we can do is we can hold them socially responsible in our school and therefore not be able to have access to the same levels of extra things. Can't take away academics, but we can certainly address those challenges within our school by not allowing them to have access to those additional extracurricular type of activities. So that's the big change within our handbook.
Okay, who has it as presented? We have a motion made to move the high school handbook as presented, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you so much. Moving along, we have Communications, this is district enrollment, that is in your packet. If there's any questions, please feel free to reach out to Matt. Sorry.
That's okay. I'm Matt.
Matt, hi Matt. Next, we're going to move on to Financial Statements and Approval of Accounts. We have Mr. Dede, come on up for us. Bring in that airplane, Mr. Dede.
You stole my opening line.
I know, I do it every time.
Yeah, I did. Good evening, everyone, thank you. Just a bit of housekeeping, I had Mrs. Lazard put at your chair this evening a motion sheet. We've got a number of motions that we need to go through this evening. And secondly, as we discussed these in Budget Sub last week, each motion was approved by Budget Sub unanimously. So if I may, Madam Chair, we're going to bring the jetliner in for a landing.
Bring it in for a landing. I'm wearing my green for a lucky reason tonight.
There you go.
Got a game.
So I know that we're at the end of the agenda, so I realize that I'm probably standing between you and the Celtics game. And this is.
We've got a little time, Dan, it's okay.
This is probably a great opportunity to have a financial filibuster, there we go, financial filibuster. So we won't, we'll get through it. All right, so the first order of business.
That will tackle you.
What's that?
We put Lee on the end for a reason, he'll take you out.
I don't watch basketball, so.
Here we go, here we go. All right, we're going to have a financial filibuster, ladies and gentlemen, what a way to go.
Member Misco will climb over, membership act.
All right, good to have a sense of humor. So first of all, we reviewed the minutes from the May 8 meeting. They were reviewed and they were discussed by the subcommittee. Secondly, I spoke again about the FY '23 audits, I believe Superintendent spoke about that at your ma- I believe Superintendent spoke about that at your May fifteenth meeting. We are knee-deep in the audits right now. We have our three ongoing audits, we have the end-of-the-year report audit, we have the FY twenty-three audit, and we also have the FY twenty-three single audit. The, the game plan, if you will, is that all three must be completed by June thirty. And as I had stated to Budget Sub, hopefully we'll have a draft report due to the Superintendent and to you by mid to late July. And if I may, I, I did state during the meeting, because I've lived this now for probably about three months, thereabouts, that I'd, I'd be happy, up to you, to, to look at that draft report and to respond to that on behalf of the district. The offer is there. So we, we completed that. The fun part, we get into the, the final numbers for FY twenty-four. As I have stated to you in previous meetings and in Budget Sub, we were looking at a number of revenues, and as previously stated, there are several revenues that have been trending well beyond the benchmark for FY twenty-four. That being said, I have before you this evening a first motion, I've mentioned this in the past, to revote the amount that you're going to use for school choice in the FY twenty-four general fund budget. Originally, a year ago, you voted approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to use school choice. Given the fact that several revenues are trending well in excess of the benchmark, and I did present this to Budget Sub, to revote the use of school choice, and the revised number would be thirty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven. That does not change the bottom line, and it does not impact assessments to the town. But what that does do is that it allows you to bring forward additional, as we've talked about, additional school choice funds into FY twenty-five and to help you with the FY twenty-five budget. So that is the first motion before you.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Does everybody know what the motion is? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
On the expense side, the general fund budget, again, you have in your packet a detailed light item budget. If you go to page thirty-two in that very detailed report, you'll see that the unencumbered balance at that time, at that snapshot in time, was one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and fifty-three cents. It's under one-point-four million. As I stated to Budget Sub during our meeting, these, these numbers are fluid, especially this time of year, because there's a lot of activity as we clean up between grants revolving and in the general fund. I also at Budget Sub then listed a, a number of anticipated expenditures for the end of the fiscal year. For example, under Mass General Law Chapter Fifty, I am obligated to move a sum of money from the general fund into Chapter Fifty, per Mass General Law. Secondly, we'll be voting on doing a journal entry later on of moving, of moving the, the expenditures for the DC trip out of school choice into the general fund. So there were a, a number of expenditures that I, I presented to them. The unofficial balance, and, and key words are unofficial, our key word is unofficial, is at that moment in time, a week or so ago, we were looking at a, a fund balance in the general fund, seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars and change. That is a fluid number, and, and we are on a daily basis making adjustments between grants revolving and, and the general fund, so we, we talked about that. As part of the cleanup process, and I presented this to Budget Sub as well, there are two budget transfers before you. And again, just looking to make several of the, the DESI series whole at this point in time. So you have a, a motion before you to transfer approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars from the two-thousand series and the three-thousand series. And then there's a second motion to transfer approximately twenty-six thousand dollars between the two-thousand series and the seven and eight-thousand series in the general fund.
I'll move it.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you. The, the next motion is to authorize me to approximately hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the transportation stabilization account. And again, for the FY twenty-five budget, we're using for the, probably for the first time in a couple of years, a stabilization account. I'm asking for your approval to transfer approximately hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund into the stabilization account to be used for the FY twenty-five transportation budget.
Having the motion. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
And then staying with FY twenty-four, and, and as you heard from Mrs. DeBarrow, so it was a, a great trip to, to Washington DC, the latter part of May. The committee last December voted to use school choice funds to, to support this trip. I am now asking for your permission, because you voted to use school choice, and we did, we, we did, we spent just shy of ninety thousand dollars in school choice, approximately eighty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents in school choice. I'm asking for your permission and approval to do a journal entry, in essence, to reverse those expenditures out of school choice, to continue to build up the fund balance in school choice and back it into the general fund to reduce the fund balance in the general fund.
Make the motion. Motion made, is there?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you. We talked real briefly, real briefly, about the grants revolving funds. You have reports in your packet, and just a quick note, you know, that last month when we reported that, there was still significant money in SA three. If you look at the report that was run about a week or so ago, that has been reduced significantly. And again, those funds are available to, to September thirty, but we are, we are reducing those funds significantly. But those, those reports, again, are in the packet. And the last point I just wanted to make about FY twenty-four, and I mentioned to Budget Sub, is that the district was awarded from DESI an additional one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars through the extraordinary relief program. This is similar to the circuit breaker program. First and foremost, I have to give a shout-out to the sped staff. Why? In my almost twenty years as a school business official, every year, we, we've applied for this as well, and, you know, and our sped expenditures didn't meet a certain threshold. It's not easy to get this money. I would be remiss if I didn't say publicly, congratulations to, to Christie and her staff for a job well done. That being said, we have received this money, and we must expend these monies by, by June thirty, twenty-twenty-four. And, and we will, and we have, either through tuitions or through special ed transportation. But I wanted to bring that to your attention. This, this was not anticipated, this is good news, and again, we'll spend it very quickly. And, oh, I'm not done.
Good job, Christie.
Oh, we've got a ways to go, we've got a ways to go.
That was early.
All right, FY, FY twenty-five, I shared with Budget Sub, and again, you have in your packet. I, I did a quick comparison of the, the cherry sheets. So the Senate cherry sheet numbers came out a couple of weeks ago, and I did a, a quick analysis of, you know, the Senate's numbers, the House numbers, and the governor's numbers, so, so that's in your packet. The final cherry sheet numbers, again, the Compromise Committee, and those will probably come out probably sometime in July, and then we'll have a, a final state budget. And, you know, we use the governor's numbers, but at least you'll know where you're standing, and you can project out potentially next year, the regional transportation, where that number stands. That number has not changed at all in, in the, in the, the three iterations of, of the state budget to date. Also, relative to FY twenty-five, council may appreciate this, we, we actually have a contract to, to present to you for FY twenty-five. This was, again, supported by, by Budget Sub. I ask you to, to vote the contract, approximately sixty-three thousand for the period of July one, twenty-twenty-four, to June thirty of twenty-twenty-five.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you. All right, the last item relative to twenty-five, we did have a little bit of discussion, and that was the creation of two stabilization accounts. And the, the question was asked of me, so why? Why, why two stabilization accounts? Are the two accounts that we're, we're looking to create, and only to create, not to fund, is a capital stabilization account and a special education stabilization account. There are several reasons. Number one, you can, you can take the funds that are deposited into these accounts, and you can invest those dollars, you can invest those dollars. It's like retirement. You, you're creating, you're creating a plan, a long-term plan with these funds. Number two, you've submitted a statement of interest with the MSBA. You know, I recall, I think I mentioned this to, to Budget Sub, when I was a rookie business official some twenty years ago, we had a, a new building, and the, the cost for the new building were somewhat extraordinary. You've got, with the capital account, you, you will have a fluid account, if you will, once you begin to make deposits, if you do, that will help you with those unanticipated, unanticipated capital expenditures. There are other reasons, I realize the, the clock is ticking. Budget Sub did, did approve this. These, this is a twofold process in terms of the approval of the stabilization accounts, because number one is the school committee needs to approve it, and then it must go to town meeting. The annual town meetings for both Athol and Royalston have come and gone. So if you decide to go forward with this, you would need to bring it forward to either the fall town meeting or next year's annual town meeting. What I'm asking is only for the creation of the accounts, not to fund it. If you were to fund it, that's a discussion for a year from now.
So move.
Second. There's a motion made and seconded to create the capital and special education stabilization accounts. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you.
And then the, the last item was FY twenty-six oil. Yes, I did say FY twenty-six oil. We, I, I participated in this year in a procurement, our current oil contract, I guess spies at the end of FY twenty-five. So I participated in a procurement that was sponsored by the French River Education Center, or more commonly known as FREC. I've been involved with them for a number of years when I was a school business official in, in Central Mass. And there, there were a couple of benefits to, to go in the way of French River. Number one, there'll be one number for oil as opposed to two, or three numbers. Number two, there, there is a, there is a smaller tank allowance for the delivery of oil. And I, I did a, a quick analysis that I, I did share with Budget Sub, and if you look at the projected usage, key word is projected, for FY twenty-five, and you look at the usage that I use in the procurement for FY twenty-six, you're looking at a savings of approximately seventeen thousand dollars. You know, we are a little bit ahead of the curve here, but even the number that I have before you this evening is even less than the number for FY twenty-five. So I have before you a motion to vote two dollars and six, two-point-six-nine-seven-two per gallon for oil effective July one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirty of twenty-twenty-six with Dennis K. Burke as the oil provider.
I'll make that motion. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Bobby.
The question I have is the cost that it would be at that time, if it goes down, will this go down also?
Through the chair, no, this is a locked number. This number, this procurement was inclusive of about twenty, twenty school districts from Central Massachusetts, and this number was based on an estimated usage of, of oil gallons, approximately two to three million gallons of oil for all these school districts. So once you vote this, we are locked into this number come FY twenty-five. Should the number went down, I will say this, this is a very aggressive number for, for FY twenty-six, twenty-six. Very aggressive number, if I may.
So there's a motion made and seconded, is there any other discussions or questions about this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that concludes my report this evening.
Very good, Mr. Didi, thank you so much.
Yep.
Moving on, our reports of the committee. Trying to think if I had anything off the top of my head, but I don't, I might circle back, but I'm not sure, so we'll move on to Budget and Finance, Lee?
I could repeat everything Dan Didi just said to keep you from your basketball game, but our report has been submitted.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Facilities?
Yep, we met tonight, we discussed.
Thank you.
The completion of several projects across the district, and that's the main practice of, we had tonight.
I did see some pictures of some playground equipment that Mr. Jack was on, so thank you, Carrie, for bringing those from RCS. Yes, I did see it, no, you don't have to share, but it was funny to see Eric spinning around on that. So thank you, I'm glad some, some equipment was up at RCS, so thank you for that. Um, negotiations?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Academic excellence?
Yes, we met on Monday. We met and spent time looking about how past meetings were run and how we'd like to see them moving forward. Talked a lot about the chronic absence, attendance, things like that, and then we set our next meeting for September.
For September, great. Public relations?
We've not met.
And policy?
We do have one policy in your packet up for a first read. That's our J I H policy, which is searches and interrogations. This is a brand-new policy, so not a policy that we have had in the past.
And that's just for first read this evening, so it'll come.
Yes, yep.
Okay, moving along, we have committee member referrals. Matt has asked to say a few things, so I'll start with Matt, and then we'll move over to Bobby.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say a few thank-yous and congratulations. So in the past couple of weeks, I have been at the Aces pre-K step-up celebration. I have been at the Aces fourth grade step-up celebration. I was to the RCS sixth grade graduation from the building. And then I was at the eighth grade step-up celebration just yesterday evening, where our display is still there on the podium. And of course, I was honored to be able to give some remarks at the high school graduation. And every one of those ceremonies was just a fabulous opportunity to see the families and the students just really celebrating the success of our children and them advancing through their academic careers. And I want to say to the families and to the kids, congratulations, you guys did an awesome job. And to the schools and to everyone that put in all of that effort to organize those tremendous events, thank you. I know how difficult it is to stop doing the daily work of running a school building and actually educating students, and then turn your focus to creating a celebration for the community. And each one of them was so welcoming, it was so well-prepared, and it was just really a tremendous honor for me, as the superintendent, to be present and to see all of that activity, and, and quite candidly, it was just genuine happiness, all about the district. So while it's been a busy couple of weeks, it has been just such a phenomenal experience, and I want to make sure that I thank everybody that's been involved in those, in those celebrations. And while I'm on the topic of the thank-yous, I also was able, in the last couple of weeks, on this past Monday night, I attended the Athol Town Meeting, the annual town meeting. And I'd like to thank both the representatives of Athol, the finance committee, and all of the residents of Athol. On Monday night, our FY twenty-five budget was approved at the Athol Annual Town Meeting. There were no questions, because Mr. Didi and our team, our leadership team, thank you to the principals and to everyone who was involved in the development of the budget. Everyone did such an excellent job of explaining the budget and having their finance committees understand what was presented in those budgets. There were no questions, there were no abstentions that I noticed, and nobody voted against our budget at the Athol Town Meeting. So I want to say a tremendous thank you to the town and to the residents of Athol. Similarly, I got the pleasure of attending on Saturday morning the Royalston Community Meeting, the annual town meeting, sorry. And similar practice happened there. We thank you, by the way, to the administration of the town. We were moved up, taken out of order, so that we didn't have to sit around all morning and through the meeting. Not that it wasn't a riveting event, I'm sure it was. So I want to thank the community for allowing us to be taken out of order. But more importantly, once again, there were. But more importantly, once again, there were no significant questions. There were no abstentions or, uh, votes opposing our budget. And I want to just thank the community and the residents for fully supporting our FY twenty-five budget. It makes our district able to run, and I'm very, very appreciative on behalf of myself and the entire district. Thank you.
Bobby, we'll move to you.
Well, I want to thank, um, Shirley Mitchell. She's at the high school. Um, and she was there for the food-a-thon that we had, that we had. And it was, the last time I had her, the amount was thirty-four thousand, but it's going up. But I also wanted to thank Jessica Bogus, Natasha Castello, Erica, I may speak a mess on the days, Bruno, and, and the Athol High School students that were involved with it. And yes, we do have some wonderful, caring, and loving, dedicated special ed teachers. And yes, they're right here at Athol High School. Our students are being very well-prepared over there for the outside world. It was really, really a very inventive, very interesting evening. The students were wonderful and everything at the, um, for the special ed students. It was wonderful, wonderful time. And I also want to thank the, um, teachers and the students on a great job that they did at the multi-cultural program that they had. And all the other ones that, the superintendent I mentioned, they were awesome. It was really, really good. The only one that I really didn't, that I didn't make, and I'm sorry I didn't make it, I wasn't here for it, was, uh, for the Roastin Community School for their step-up, uh, over there. But the other ones, I tried to make, and I thought that one I didn't, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing for me tonight? Kylie?
Nothing for me tonight?
Um, I just want to congratulate, this past weekend, uh, the Dance Studio of Orange had their recital. And we have numerous students from this district that participate at that dance school. And even though I know recitals can be long, um, they did a phenomenal job. Uh, it was three hours, and those kids didn't stop moving at all, and they did a great job. So.
Um, I would like to thank Mrs. Cleveland for her years of service here, as she leaves us at the end of June. So thank you. You'll be very missed.
I just have a couple of thank-yous and congratulations as well, um, to the RCS dare graduates. Um, I always like to bring this up every year, because it's a wonderful program, and it's a really special opportunity for those students at RCS. And so congratulations for all their hard work. Um, and I also, with our last day of school being this Friday, I just want to give a, a huge shout-out to teachers, staff, and families. We made it through another year, and we're all ready for a nice summer vacation. But we certainly would not have made it through without all the dedication from everybody who's involved in making a school run for the year. So thank you.
Frank?
Ben here.
Lee, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening.
Um, just quickly, I wanted to, um, say thank you to Principal King for making an awesome experience with the teachers at the high school for my girls who graduated. Watching you orchestrate those children that day was actually kind of eventful and funny. But thank you to the high school staff for helping me get my kids through, and the middle school where my kids started. Uh, it's been quite the adventure for me, uh, getting them through the school system. So I, I'm very appreciative of everything that the school has done. And I am so looking forward to seeing what my little guy decides to do, and looking forward to, uh, any additional academic, um, programs that the high school may have to offer, specifically around healthcare, if you want to know. He is interested in, in H-COP programs. So, uh, thank you to all that you guys have done up there to make our students leave high school more prepared than they are. It's a huge difference. So thank you so much. And that is it for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Have a good night. Go Celtics.